Report to the ABC Board and to the council. ABA transition plan, we are confirming that the all of the firms that submitted their initial statements qualifications continue to be interested and available. Once that has been received, then we can finalize the selection and begin negotiating an agreement. For the street maintenance program, we are evaluating the scope. This is an updated calendar with design and bid preparation during the fall winter of twenty twenty two, award early in twenty twenty three and the construction to begin in the spring of twenty twenty three. Federally and state funded projects, North Darrington reconstruction, there's not a whole lot of change in this slide. But what I do want to emphasize is the right of way acquisition. We've begun coordinating with the Camino Regional Regional Mobility Authority so that they can begin to acquire the right of way on behalf of the city. This is a high visibility project, we need to meet the deadlines. One of the complications that we have not yet received environmental clearance, but the bidding for the project has remained fixed in July of twenty twenty three. So the time period for the city to acquire the right of way is shortened. But the project is still scheduled for fiscal twenty twenty three award by by Tech dot. So what we're working towards doing is bringing a recommended agreement to the council for your consideration in August twenty twenty two. Safety projects, South Darrington safety lighting is still scheduled to begin in mid of twenty twenty three. We are looking at managing the costs initially, the cost for for continuous lighting was much higher than the budget. So we're looking at fewer lighting fixtures, fewer poles. One of the complicating factors for this project is that we can't install the poles on the median, which would manage the number of both poles and still provide the lighting, but because Texas Gas Service has a easement along the median, we cannot install anything on the median. So we have to go to the parkway that increases the number of poles, so we want to make sure that we're still meeting the the goals of the safety project, but we're still on schedule for that.
Well, I have understood that poles and fixtures and such for lighting projects are out, they need at least a year wait time for that, so this is gonna be one of those.
Tech dot has included in their specifications a four monthly time for the contractors. That that's how it's it's being put out, that's what I understand Tech dot is doing for all of their lighting projects, but yes, that's that's been a a comment that we heard as well. Canaso is scheduled for letting this year, fiscal year twenty twenty two, but again, we don't expect that it will start until the first calendar quarter of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three, given that that long lead time. For the TOD updates, our consultant is developing the architectural guidelines and those will include a form based zoning. So we're expecting their report in the next couple of weeks and then we will make comments to them. Race grant application was submitted, we're still waiting for for notification on the race grant. The community funding, the community project funding, we expect notification of the final determination, second half of this year, we've received some promising news that this is continually moving forward, but we don't have, we don't have the award.
No award on one that will get out?
No, sir. On the TIRZ participation agreements, council, we are scheduled to present a commissioners' court workshop on July twenty first and the court is scheduled to consider the agreement July twenty fifth. We're still working through an updated model for the financial analysis. We're still working with this, these deadlines in mind, but we may have to shift them a week or two to make sure that we have the the internal controls and and have verified the figures that the the city's financial advisor develops and then of course that that the county can can take a look at their at at those figures as well and make a determination. We had initial discussions with the HR MUD at their board meeting on July sixth, this was the first time that we had an opportunity to visit with them about their concerns, what they wanted as far as the goals of TOD and the revenue stream. We expect to be working with our legal counsel and engineering consultant to develop something that works for for both entities. What the board expressed is a concern that if they dedicate one hundred percent of their stream to the city, they will be limited in how they can expand plant capacity for the use that that will be generated by the TOD. We think that there are ways to mitigate that and and work around that, certainly property taxes are not the only revenue stream that the HR MUD has, so we want to remind them of that as we work with them. We also presented to the ESD number one at their board of commissioners meeting on June twenty third, we have forwarded documents to them, we've not heard back, but they seemed interested in participating with us, so they they may be a partner that we had not initially considered in the TIRZ. And subject to your questions, that's the CFPD.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Regarding Golden Eagle, I am glad to see that we are making progress and getting closer and closer to finalizing that contract and and that being complete. But with Corky though, do you have any idea when we'll be installing that the climbing fixture?
No, ma'am, we're we're waiting for, there's a pole that is required to reinstall the climbing fixture and so like anything else, that's that's part of the delay, we we can't get a guaranteed delivery date, so we can't tell you what the date for the installation would be. Yes.
Okay.
There are motions approved.
Second.
The motion to approve any statement? To accept the report as presented. Are there no further questions? Please call the council.
Hello?
Hi.
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 Thank you, council.
Thank you.
I don't understand, this is on presentation of the status of the Belicano Whitehead projects.
Good evening, mayor, city council, Sal Alonso, Associate Director of Planning Development for El Paso County. With me today, I have Mr. Mr. Ramírez, the executive director of the CRMA, and then our partners with the GEC, Mr. Agrafino, also available for questions. I want to thank you for having us this evening on your agenda and I just wanted to give you a a brief update on the Belicano project. The county have wanted to, as we move forward into other projects, is to be proactive and 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 come out to the public and and to the agencies that are, could be affected by not only roadway project, but any large projects, as as you know, Belicano is a major roadway that connects the far east side of Paso, so I'm sure several of you utilize it and and the public, so going forward, the county will be presenting more more of these upcoming projects to different agencies, we've met already with, for example, of course, commissioners' board and and the MPO and so forth, so again, thank you for having us this evening and let me go and get started on the presentation. Okay, oh, yes.
Um, our screens went out. So I'm satisfied. So I don't know.
It was all a plan. And for the record, is it here? Phenol, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, just to give you a little brief of history on 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 the project, again, the project team is made up of El Paso County, they see our RMA, the design consultant was CEA Group, construction management is is performed by our our GEC Atkins Engineering, construction contractor is Jar Concrete and the construction amount for this project is a little under twenty two million, about twenty one, twenty one point six. The scope, just to give you just a big scope of 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 work, the limits were from Luther through seventy five all the way to Darrington, it's about a three mile stretch. And it will be, once the project is completed, we'll have a six lane divided roadway, it's very similar to Eastlake, the one that we we completed about a year ago, with illuminations, landscaping, a hike and bike on one side, we'll have drainage infrastructure, as you know, Belicano would always flood during even small events right there by the school, so we have been able to mitigate that, plus the other runoff that would just be on on the shoulder, so we do have a lot of drainage infrastructure there. To include that, I I I I know it's not on the slide, but again, the partnership that we have with the El Paso Water Utilities, we did reach out to them earlier in the design, asking them if they were planning on doing anything within this footprint and and because we were coming in with the roadway improvements, the last thing we want to do is have a roadway and then come back about a year later to start cutting the roadway, so a lot of coordination was met between us and El Paso Water Utilities. So they are extending water and sewer for that area to provide for future growth. As as you can see, that area is fast growing, so PSB just wanted to be ready to go for, to be able to provide services and that that's the same partnership that we have on the rest of the project, and I know it's not included, but I just wanted to mention that, that the coordination with that. Just to mention some 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 delays that we've had up to now, obviously COVID has been one of them, but you know, that that's something that was affected, the effect of the project back when COVID was still really strong, but we did lose a lot of time during that time because, you know, once crews go out, it was just like a wildfire, you you lose the the whole crew. Utility COVID also, Paso Electric, I know we had a lot of issues with relocating poles, but when their crews were down, we were just you know, kind of, our hands were tied until they came back, so the other things, the materials, the shortage of materials on on supplies, likely we do have most of those materials in hand, but some of the materials have been delayed because of the the effect of COVID. And then we did have a lot of unforeseen issues on the utility corridor. Speaking from experience, I I know usually when you design a project, you 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 kind of get the best available data, information from utilities on where a line should be or where it should not be, but not until you start unearthing what's below, you realize that five feet off center is is ten feet and that creates a a domino effect, and we did see a lot of those issues, especially within the portion westbound between Luther seven five and Sunfire. We 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 discovered a lot of three major issues, not horizontal, but also vertical, so we were, had to go back and kind of redesign that portion, so that was a portion that was just like, just stockpiled for for several months, but because it's a federal project, we had to make sure we designed it, go through Tech dot, get their support, concurrence, they had to review it again and then we had to go then get the contractor to give us a a change order request because it is additional work that we have requested. And and along the way, we still had some utility conflicts with utilities being where they're not supposed to be and areas that we felt that we were clear, we weren't clear with the utility, so just just to add to that. We do have, we have a possible future delays, again, we're hoping those aren't delays as we move forward, is the cement availability? I think that's pretty much across the board now, it's not that there's no cement, it's just, they're just a short, so it's it's they won't be able to provide cement to contractors as as freely as they have been, so we're we're definitely keeping an eye on that, just to make sure and and we're 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 really keeping an eye on that one, because that that could really hurt hurt our project, seeing that the most of the work left is concrete lane, so we we do need a lot of cement going forward. Again, there are some areas that that we still haven't excavated to install the last segment of the storm sewer and sanitary sewer line, so again, we just put, it could be a possible more unforeseen conflicts with the utilities and then again, material short availability. Right now, again, we should be okay, but again, if things get worse, then that could be a possible delay going forward. And feel free to stop me if you guys have any questions along the way. This next hour here, just gives, give you like a quick little timeline on on where we're hoping to be at before the, by by the end of the year. The one in yellow, the the little segment in yellow is the stuff that we have already completed, that's between Luther seven five and Air Coop. We're currently working on the segment red between Luther seven five and Air Coop, that's the area that that we had seen a lot of utility conflicts, half of that, but that's where we're working on base right now. The remaining portion, we started with the concrete pores. We're also working on segment, I'm calling segment purple, but the se- uh purple segment as well, and that's the the stretch all along on the north side, basically all across Joe property. So that's that's the area that we're targeting right now to get completed. The the baby blue or light blue, that's what we're calling our phase four, that's the last segment of the project, but again, what, once we get the the main lanes constructed, we'll be able to get that underway, and that's that's the segment I mentioned that we still haven't unearthed anything, so we we're still needing to install sanitary sewer and storms, so we're we're hoping we don't have any unforeseen utility conflicts in that segment, but those aren't our target dates as of today, that's what we're still targeting, to have those portions. Personally, the the ones that we're really trying to get those open is segment, the the yellow and the and the red, because that is the segment that the volume is so high, because you have the traffic coming off of Mission Ridge, north Mission Ridge, making a left on 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 Belicano as you're heading westbound, you have the the traffic coming from Luther seven five heading east, and a lot of that traffic does filter down to Mission Ridge as it spreads. I'm not saying that that the traffic does not continue all the way to Darrington, it does, but the volumes do do drop, so our key is to get that segment open fully, to have six lanes divided both sides, to be able to carry more more traffic flow within that segment. The plan is to come back later and 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 do the the remaining amenities, the the sidewalks, the landscaping, all the all the pretty stuff at the lab, but the main goal is to get the main lanes open throughout the year, but obviously, our goal is to get everything completed as soon as possible.
It's a very frustrating drive.
Yes. Oh, yes.
So so I, I want to picture, so the three lanes are gonna expand over towards the Joe site, correct?
Yes.
So back twenty nineteen, that's when they started doing the telecom, moving the telecom, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So there was a crossover on Air Coop, right?
Roughly in that area, yes.
Because they and then they crossed over and so that's complete, right, so are 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 those when, within limits for you guys, or is that what you're talking about, all of that has to be re? You're 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 gonna excavate all that and then assess whether or not those were placed correctly?
You're referring to the segment in the blue?
In the light blue.
In the light blue?
Uh huh.
Uh yes, so we did pick up all the information that was provided by the telecom on, we did provide them our files to let them know exactly where the future one would be. Whether or not the contractor hit those spots, that's what still we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Okay.
We did have some, on the on the first segment of the yellow segment, we did have a lot of AT&T that at some places that were right on and some that were within the roadway, so we had to work around that. So we're hoping that the segment blue is is far, it it kind of looks preliminary that they should be out of the way, but obviously, we won't know until we get there, so.
Anyway.
You're welcome.
So you're, and they are not gonna do anything on Berryville? So you said to Darrington?
No, the, so Berryville is now Darrington.
Oh, it's, yeah, Berryville is not Darrington, sorry.
Darrington, Berryville is now.
So that's gonna be the, really?
Yes, sir.
No, the Berryton is not gonna be.
Yes.
It is gonna be.
Yeah, so I I I could jump into that really quick, so, no, no, that's fine.
Okay, no, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So the 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 project limits for Belicano is from Luther seven five to Darrington slash Berryville, it's now Darrington. The county does have a project ready to to exit or let, hopefully later this year, and we're just trying to finalize the last tracks of roadway that we need and those improvements would go from the intersection of Darrington and Belicano, south all the way to Eastlake, and that would be a six lane divided roadway, very similar to what we've done in Belicano and and Eastlake. The other project that's getting ready to let in in March, and that's the extension of Darrington north of Belicano, which we call John Hayes, and that would connect from the intersection of Belicano and Darrington, three miles north to Mottwood. So that would have, that's what we're calling, would be the outer loop, as as right now, reliever for that area, that that way, if you're not having to go all the way across Belicano, Luther seven Saragossa, you could just go up John Hayes. Now, John Hayes will be a a phase into two, will have phase one, which is just a two lane roadway, and then and and it all became because of the 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 money tied up at the MPO, there's not enough money in fiscal year twenty three, so we broke it up into two phases, phase two will come in at twenty five, so if we're wrapping up John phase, John Hayes phase one, John Hayes phase two would be right following that, and that would be to include the other two lanes, but the ultimate buildout is a six lane divided, as far as that John Hayes to match the Darrington project.
And they're tentative bid for that, I'm sorry?
Uh, the John Hayes should be, we're we're targeting to let in March of twenty twenty three, less than a year, and then we'll probably start construction, I don't want to put Atkins in the RMA on board.
No, let's do it, let's do it.
Hopefully by, we open bid, split in March, I would like to be out of construction in May.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, there's there's the contracting negotiations and all that stuff, but we're we're hoping to be under construction, way under construction come summer. Yeah, and I I believe that that should be what we call green, I think it's called green space, green field, meaning there's not live traffic there, so we could close it off completely, I know people still use it, but we could close it off and and let the contractor go and and without having to do switchovers. Right now, obviously, Belicano, we couldn't do that, or on Eastlake, or on Darrington, so we're we're kind of working around that, so.
Okay, Mr.
Yes.
What kind of happen with the intersection of Mission Ridge and Belicano, is that gonna go back to a three way?
It would, it'll it'll go down to a a a T intersection, a signal light, but again, if I could go ahead and add, the county is working on another extension, which would be the extension of Mission Ridge north, which we calling GED S extension, you could kind of see it right there, it's a, I don't know, there's a point here in this one?
The V Sanzor, right?
Oh, okay, I understand it.
The V Sanzor connection?
Yeah, it's a, oops, we're the wrong way, oops, I need some help here. My friend's my friend, sorry about that.
While they're pulling that up, I have a question.
Yes.
Will all of these have the hike and bike trails?
Yes. Yeah, and and some of them will accommodate both sides and some of them we can only accommodate on on one side, but it would
Just one side, right, I noticed you mentioned that at the beginning.
It will have the, you know, the ultimate, obviously, is what we did in Eastlake, that was what we called the Cadillac version,
Correct.
To have the 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 both sides, plus the bike lane within the footprint.
Of both sides. Right.
But the FHW as of, I think it was this year, they're trying to get away from having the bike lane within the roadway footprint, they're they want everything within the parkway, so
Back on.
We're removing that segment, but but we're still providing that connectivity, that connection, because when we first started all this transportation in the county, we started with Rojas, and that's when we started with the bike lanes. I know people said, why are you doing it, doesn't connect, I was like, well, give it time, and look at us now, four or five years later, we're now hopefully be connecting to the cities, trails and 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 bike lanes, so it just starts somewhere and then eventually kind of spread out to that, so. So, just to mention, so the the intersection of Mission Ridge and 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 Belicano will will be a full intersection when the Tierra del Este project comes in, and again, that project is again, is another very big image of John Hayes, it'll be a three lane divided roadway, same amenities, bike lanes, illumination, and that it will connect from Belicano, three miles north to the city limits, which is like, just just passing like Cozy Cove, so it's it's another arterial. That one will be much more of a reliever to Luther seventy five than John Hayes, but right now, John Hayes will act as a as an alternate to that area, but as as temporary, right now, will be a a a T intersection, and as soon as we get the Tierra del Este, which is, I believe, that project is a twenty six, if I'm not understanding, but the county is designing that right now, because we want to have shovel rated projects. Our our goal is if money comes on, you know, from feds or any extra money at the MPO, we want to be able to present that to to the board and ask them, we have a shovel rated project and we feel that this would be a good candidate to hopefully expedite that project and get that project constructed sooner than than what it's scheduled for.
So that else was gonna be, along with to where the subdivision, that's like that that portion of the area?
Yeah, so so that one was done, that 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 temporary relief route was just a temporary
It's just an easement.
easement that we got from the property owners. You can't see it here, but just north of that extension of the relief route, the city came in, they annexed that, so they're actually building portion of the Outono Estee, the 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 final alignment, so we're, when we come in, we'll be just finding on both sides to that problem, so that portion will remain.
How about Peyton Road, is it going through?
Uh Peyton, right now, we do have it on MTP, but we don't have, it it is in the the this DNO and on the on the most recent, the 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 MTP twenty fifty at the MPO, but it is identified, but that that nothing in the horizon. Um, again, just going back to when I started the presentation, we did present this back early June to commissioners' court, and again, we wanted to go out there and and and, you know, inform the public, I I know Belicano is heavily used and and there's always the, when is it gonna be finished, what's going on, so we wanted to be more proactive on not only this one, but all the future projects, but as of today, we 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 did present this to commissioners' court, to the, later, we had presented this to the CRMA board. We also met at the transportation policy board at the MPO. We were on schedule to meet at T-PAC this last Wednesday, last Wednesday, but it uh it didn't have form, so it was postponed, so we had to go back until go back till August. Today, we're presenting in in your council, and then we're looking at presenting at at city council, Paso City Council at the end of I think it's July twenty six, if I'm not mistaken. Same type of presentation, just you know, keep them informed, and then SISD. I I know we're trying to coordinate, but I know with the summer and all that, we're we're trying to get on the next board to inform them, because SISD has been a great partner, especially with the school being adjacent to Belicano, coordinating that, so we want to provide them also with an update on on the status on this project. Um, again, the the slide is just, just to give you a little items that we've completed, activities that we've completed since June, when we presented this to commissioners, it was like right before June. And since then, we've been able to finish some of these items, the embankment between Joe Battle and Sunfire. We started also installing flex base, we've completed the the twenty four foot section pass of concrete between Sunfire all the way to Air Coop, and then between Air Coop and and Darrington, we finished installing some water loops. Uh, and then between Air Coop and and Darrington, we finished installing some water loops, um, as part of the PSB, uh, bid, and then completed some, uh, um, uh, swelled rip rap needed for drainage, and then we compacted some H-MAC, um, and that those are where the, uh, major activities completed in in June. Uh, in July, here's our forecast on what we're 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 looking at, completing the the flex base between the the segment between Job Battle and Sunfire. Um, finishing signing two service laterals, water and sewer for that development occurring at Loop three seventy-five, uh, right there by the, uh, Alamo Drafthouse for their new development. Begin with the hot mix and, uh, start installing rebar, um, between Sunfire and Air Coop, our goal is to be able to complete the other half of 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 the segment, uh, between Sunfire and Air Coop, to have the full build-out on the three lanes on that end. Um, between Air Coop and Darrington, we wanna, uh, finalize the 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 testing of the water loops, uh, finish the embankment, start with the, um, the rock walls, and then also start with the rebar, which we have started on that segment, uh, so we could go ahead and continue with the, uh, concrete pavement between Air Coop and, uh, Darrington. Again, uh, the next couple of slides are just coming some pictures on 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 what we're doing here, we're now, we're looking at between, I guess, Sunfire looking west to Loop three seventy-five, this is the, uh, flexible base that we're that we're we're are finalizing in the segment, um. The segment right here just kinda shows where we're, we left off with the concrete pavement, uh, near the Air Coop. Uh, this segment was, uh, a segment near three, Loop three seventy-five, that was, which was critical, because, um, as you know, as you're approaching the Loop three seventy-five from Belicano heading at at bottle lengths to one lengths, and we're trying to get that full build-out to have a little bit more, uh, dedicated right turn, a three, uh, through lane, and then your dedicated left turn on to, uh, Loop three seventy-five. Um, this one is just, uh, closer down to the Job, uh, site, and this is just, uh, the water testing, uh, the water loops that we installed as part of the, uh, El Paso Water Utility bid. Um, and that wraps up my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, um.
Big project. There are a lot, there's a lot of frustration, but once it's all finished, people forget about that, you know?
Yes.
But, uh, I I appreciate you coming out, obviously, I was just thinking about this the other day, since you you're on the agenda, but, uh, uh, wow, those are you know, like I say, big projects and they they impact people, you know?
Yes.
And, uh, that that make people lives better.
Correct. No, I I, from the from the from my experience, since being in the county, I know Eastlake was the first, uh, eye-opener on on big projects and and I know you know, I I was, a lot of people got my number, I don't know how, but they 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 got it, I would get calls and saying, where was going on, and a- as soon as the lanes opened, nobody called me, nobody said thank you, and then now, I guess they passed my number to folks in Belicano, and now they have it, so, um, but no, this is big progress.